Okay, committee, we do have a forum. Welcome to the meeting of the Committee on Economic and Community Development. We are here this afternoon for two bills. Our 2:00 PM bill, which is bill number 21-005, I'm sorry, 25, rezoning 2200, 2205, 2220, 2300, 2301, 2310, 2330, 2400, and 2500, Broning Highway in Block 6916, Lot 015. And then at 2:10 or later, we'll begin Bill Number 21-0045, which is the rezoning Block 4053, Lot 013, Ward 09, Section 020. In attendance for members of the committee, we have myself, Chair and Green Middleton, Chair of the Committee, Vice President of the Council, and Representative of the Sixth District. We have John Bullock, Member of the Committee and Representative of the Ninth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We have Member of the Committee Mark Conway and Representative of the Fourth District. He's not here yet. We have Councilman Conway. I'm sorry, you here?
Yep, just jumped in. Thank you.
Perfect timing. We have Councilman Ryan Dorsey, Member of the Committee and Representative of the Third District.
Thank you.
And we have Member of the Committee and Representative of the Thirteenth District, Councilman Glover. Is, do I see Councilman Glover yet? I'm sure he'll be joining.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Councilman Glover. And then we have Councilwoman Ramos of the Fourteenth District and Member of the Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. And then we have Councilman Robert Stokes, Representative of the Twelfth District and Member of the Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We also have Councilman Zeke Cohen, Representative of the First District, sponsor of the first bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And looking down, I don't see any other council members, Members of the Office of the President. We have Nikki Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We have Erin DeGraffan Reed.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We have Matt Stegman.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
And we have, you're welcome, and we have Lucy Font. Think I saw Lucy, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, yes.
And representing the Mayor's Office, we have Nina Themulus.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Before we begin, if you are not speaking, please keep yourself on mute. Please do not take yourself off of mute unless you are recognized by the Chair. When you are recognized, please identify yourself and the organization or agency that you are representing. Once you finish speaking, please put yourself back on mute. Let's begin. The public notice requirements have been met. And as I mentioned, we're going to begin with Bill Number 21-0025, which is the rezoning of Block 4053, Lot 013, Ward 09, Section... Oh, hold back. Jumping the gun again. Okay, this is the... Okay, sponsor of the bill is Councilmember Cohen. This bill was introduced on January 25, 2021. And this is for the purpose of changing the zoning for properties known as, and I'm going to repeat them again, as 2200, Block 6916, Lot 003, 2220, Block 6916, Lot 004, 2300, Block 6916, Lot 005, 2310, Block 6916, Lot 007, 2330, Block 6916, Lots 110A and 009, 2400, Block 6916, Lot 011, and Lot 2500, Block 6916, Lot 013, Broning Highway and Block 6916, Lot 015, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat from OIC Zoning District to the MI Zoning District in changing the zoning for the properties known as 2205, Block 6915, Lot 001, 2301, Block 6915, Lot 006, and 2501, Block 6915, Lot 009A. Broning Highway is outlined in blue on the accompanying plat from the I-2 Zoning District to the MI Zoning District. And this bill will be effective 30 days after its enactment. I know this bill had kind of taken a little bit of time. So I'm going to now yield to the sponsor of the bill, Councilman Zeke Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and sorry for the exceedingly long title on the bill. Appreciate you reading it. So this is at the behest of the Maryland Port Administration. The port of Baltimore, as we all know, has been expanding pretty rapidly, both in our area of Southeast Baltimore and also just in Baltimore County, as well as Trade Point Atlantic has started to come back and boom. So this legislation, this rezoning, will help to accommodate additional cargo and operations resulting from that growth. The Port Administration and my office reached out to leaders of the St. Helena Community Association, City on a Hill Improvement Association, and the O'Donnell Heights Tenant Council, all of whom were supportive of this zoning change. Those are the most impacted neighborhoods. So that is essentially what this would do, and I appreciate you all hearing the bill.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen. Any committee members have any questions to Councilman Cohen before we move on to agency reports? No questions? So we'll now hear agency reports, and please state your name and your agency and give your report. And we're going to start with the Planning Commission. Make sure you include, you know, your discussion with the finding of the facts with this bill as well. And I think Matt DeSantis, are you going to talk about this bill?
Yes, Terrell. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair, members. This is Matt DeSantis with the Baltimore City Planning Department. So City Council Bill 21-0025 was heard by the Planning Commission at its February 25, 2021, hearing. The Planning Commission concurred with Planning Department staff and recommended approval of the bill with a couple technical amendments. Those technical amendments, as described in the staff report and the government memo sent over, are just some tweaks, just to provide some more clarity. The, including, removing, there are two parcels shown on the accompanying plat map that are not actually part of the rezoning. So the one recommended amendment is to just revise the plat maps so that those two parcels are not included. And then the second technical amendment is simply adding 2501 Burning Highway to the bill title. This parcel is included in the rezoning. And as has been mentioned, it's a very long bill title, so it was, you know, it's an understandable technical title. The attached Planning Department staff report includes findings of fact, which are, which have been submitted into the record. And then additionally, I want to add two additional points, two additional findings regarding neighborhood change since the passage of Transform Baltimore in 2016 to now. And one of those, those facts, as Councilman Cohen pointed out, is the increased traffic for Baltimore. The port has seen significant cargo increases over the past five years since Transform Baltimore. And so those increases in cargo volume directly contribute to the this proposed rezoning of allowing for expanded port operations. The other thing that I wanted to point out for the record is the recent DOT Streetscape improvements to Burning Highway. DOT recently conducted a significant roadway upgrade to this section of Burning Highway to support increased port operations. So I'm happy to also go through the other facts provided by planning staff and accepted by the planning commission.
Yes, that's important. That's important that the committee and the Law Department hear these facts. Thank you.
Yes, so running through the findings of facts, the proposed action would support the goals containing the Comprehensive Master Plan for Baltimore City, specifically Earn Goal One, strengthen identified growth sectors, Objective Eight, retain and attract port-related services. It is also, it is also not inconsistent with the southeastern neighborhood's development plan. The success of the Port of Baltimore is tied directly to the success of the entire city. And this rezoning will allow for the port to expand cargo terminal operations, which will provide benefits to the city through increased commerce and job opportunities. Regarding needs of the particular neighborhood, the zoning change will support the needs of the neighborhood, which is dedicated almost exclusively to port-related activities by allowing the port to grow and its operations to accommodate the continued growth in cargo shipments. So other associated findings of fact required by the City Council, population changes, there have not been any significant population changes since the time of the last comprehensive rezoning in 2016. But again, that's due to the fact that this part of town is an industrial area. The site is well-served by public services and utilities and should remain so into the future. Presence of deep water is a unique attribute that is best taken advantage of through expanded port operations. And as I mentioned, the recent upgrades to Burning Highway by DOT support this rezoning. There would be no effect upon present or future transportation patterns in the area as a result of the adoption of this bill. The continued monitoring and enforcement of truck traffic prohibitions through nearby residential neighborhoods will be even more important with likely increase in cargo port volume. And as Councilman Cohen mentioned, his office and planning department had some conversations with the St. Helena neighborhood leadership about making sure that any increased truck traffic doesn't negatively impact their neighborhood. The proposed zoning district is compatible with the existing and proposed development for the area and is essential for the planned expansion of the port. The Planning Commission has recommended approval of this bill. The BMZA has commented separately, I believe, also in support of this bill. And the rezoning of these properties to the M-1 district would be consistent with the city's plan. And additional standards required for map amendments, existing uses of the property, existing uses of property within the general area of the site are industrial and industrial maritime. The MI zoning would serve as an extension of the existing MI zoning of the adjacent Seagirt Marine Terminal. The OIC or Office Industrial Campus Zoning District does not permit water freight terminal use, and so is inconsistent with the proposed expansion of Seagirt Marine Terminal, thus justifying this rezoning to the M-1 zoning district. And regarding the trend of development in the general area, since the passage of Transform and the current zoning categories having been assigned, the Port Administration has purchased these properties for expansion. And again, the port has seen substantial increases in volume, and DOT has conducted, has completed roadway improvement, improvements to Burning Highway supporting increased maritime port uses. So that concludes the findings of fact provided by planning. I'm happy to answer any other questions about that or anything else with the bill. Thank you.
Do I have any questions to Matt from the committee at this point? I just want to add that, you know, our port is definitely very important to Baltimore. And they had a, they had some kind of special, I don't know if it was over the weekend, but not too long ago, of how through this pandemic, our port has really been very busy and just really increased phenomenally throughout this whole pandemic. You know, the, all those containers and things over there. And just kind of very intimate about the port myself because of the National Committee that I serve on and as Vice Chair of the Ports. So I just thank you for the work that you continue to do, and especially in the First District, being next to this port, Councilman Cohen, on this bill. And since we have no further questions from the Planning Department, we'll go on and move to the BMZA. I know you defer to planning, but can we get that, whoever the representative is? We need someone to say that for the recording. Is Kathleen Byrne or Simon Penning here? If not, go ahead, Nina.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nina Themulus with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. A representative from BMZA was not able to attend this afternoon's hearing. However, they do stand by the report and deferring to the Planning Commission's report.
Thank you, Nina. The Department of Transportation, is Liam Davis with us?
I am here, Madam Chair. Liam Davis, Baltimore City DOT. We stand by our bill report, which is no objection.
Thank you, Liam. The City Solicitor's Office.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. This is Victor, Chief Solicitor with the City Law Department. We are prepared, the Law Department is prepared to approve the bill for formal legal sufficiency. The oral report that Matt from the Planning just gave, as well as the written report, provides enough facts for you to lawfully rezone this property.
Thank you, Victor. Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Stephanie Murdoch, Legislative Liaison for DHCD. We stand by our bill report. We do not object to the passage of this bill.
Thank you, Stephanie. The Baltimore Development Corporation, I have listed Sandy Bland. Is she, is Sandy here?
Madam Chair, Luis Cardona with the BDC is on as an attendee. If he could be elevated?
Sure. Give us one second. Hello?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry about that. I keep on getting public invites instead of panelist invites. But Baltimore Development Corporation stands by its report in support of this bill. Thanks for your assistance, Nina.
Thank you. We do, do I see Jennifer Guthrie here from the Port of Baltimore?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I'm just, I wanted to thank you for hearing the bill and Councilman Cohen for bringing it up on our behalf. Just briefly for the record, I'm Jennifer Guthrie, Legislative Manager for the Maryland Port Administration. MPA is in full support of this bill, rezones the parcels on the Point Breeze property, all a part of our long-term goal to expand maritime cargo handling operations at Seagirt Marine Terminal. And all three property owners, including the MPA, Rucker Terminals, and Maryland Transportation Authority are in support of this. And it's all about our continued growth. We have a lot of plans for this property, just to continue that expansion for us as we head into another good year. And with that, I can also take any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the committee? At this point, I just want to thank you again for the work that you all continually do at the Port of Baltimore in keeping Baltimore City doing your part in helping to keep us thriving and creating jobs.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
The committee will now take public testimony, so we're checking for that. And while we're checking for that, I just want to say, please be patient. Use the raise hand function if you wish to testify. When called upon, please state your name. For telephone users, callers will be unmuted, one by one. When a caller is unmuted, they will hear two beeps. If you do not wish to testify, please state so. When unmuted, if you do not wish to testify, I mean, if you do wish to testify, please state your name. So we're checking now if there's any, there's no hand. No hands are raised. And we have one caller. And I do see Carolyn Pecker on there, too. I don't know if it's for this bill or the next one, but you probably want to check with Carolyn, Jennifer.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. I'm just here to observe on this.
Okay.
Thank you, though. I appreciate it.
Justin Williams, are you on the other bill?
Yes, Madam Chair, just also observing.
Okay. And then I see Brooke Hutchins. Are you on the other bill or this bill? Brooke Hutchins, I saw some kind of exclamation point. And then I see, hello?
I'm just observing. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer, Jennifer Settles. Are you on for this bill?
Yes, I am, and I'm just observing. Thank you.
Thank you. And Justin Williams, again, I see you're, you're fine. Okay. John Heligas. John Heligas. Are you for this bill or the second bill?
I'm just observing.
Okay. Lot of observations today. Okay, we do have one caller. State your name, please, if you're willing, if you want to testify on this bill.
I'm just observing. Rob and Logan, just observing for the next bill.
Okay, thank you. So it looks like we're finished with that. And we do have to vote on finding of the facts, then we have to vote on the amendments, and then we have to vote on the total package. So we'll start with the finding of the facts. Do I have a motion to move the finding of the facts?
Madam Chair, I move the finding of the facts that can be found on Page Three of the Planning Commission's report, Planning Staff Report.
Second.
Wait, wait a minute. Hold up.
Don't limit it to just that page.
I was just told we can't limit it to just that page, so...
Oh, can I just say that it's starting on that page? Or just move the facts?
Just, just for the facts, just for the facts.
Facts are moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Glover. Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Finding of facts will be moved to second reader. Now for the amendment. Do I have a motion to move the amendment?
So moved, Councilman.
So moved by Conway. And a second?
Second.
Okay, for the amendments, Stokes.
Is this the vote, the yes or no? Because I don't know.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
For amendment, this is just to vote for amendments.
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
And Chair Middleton is a yes. Now I need the vote for the bill, a motion to move the bill with the finding of facts and amendments moved by...
Glover.
Thank you, Councilman Glover. And second by...
Conway.
Conway. Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
This bill will move favorable as amended to second reader. And now we are on the next bill, which is Bill Number 21-0045. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the property at Block 4553, Lot 013, Ward 09, and Section 020, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat from the OS Zoning District to the R-7 Zoning District in providing for a special effective date. The bill was introduced on February 22, 2021. The bill was sponsored by Councilwoman Ramos. And we'll now hear comments from Councilmember Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Committee and staff. I appreciate the opportunity to present this bill. During, the lot that we're talking about here is the, is on 33rd Street, right across the street from the entrance to the Giant on 33rd Street. During Transform Baltimore, the city's rezoning ordinance, the lot was erroneously rezoned open space. The bill will change the zoning of the... The bill will change the zoning of that lot back to R7, while the lot behind it, facing Venable, which you see in my testimony and on the accompanying plat, facing Venable, that will remain open space, that bigger lot, while the first lot on 33rd Street will be rezoned to R7. And it seems, it's very simple, and I look forward to the planning commission staff's explanation of the findings of the fact, and I appreciate your support. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And we'll now hear from agency representatives and state your name, and we'll start with the planning commission, which gave a favorable report.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the committee. This bill was reviewed by the planning commission in their meeting of March 11th, where they reviewed the attached staff report and heard some additional test. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Artesa with the Department of Planning. So the planning commission reviewed our staff report, as well as additional testimony and facts presented in their meeting, where they then voted to recommend favorably for this bill. The OS zone is an open space zone that was applied to lot 13 in error, and we go through some detail in our staff report to show how this was an administrative mistake that led to that outcome. So I can walk you through some of the requirements for rezoning from state law, where we need to look at the plan, the needs of the city, and the needs of the neighborhood. The property itself contains just a little bit over 9,000 square feet of land and was designated as open space zone at the end of the comprehensive rezoning process, but that was done in error. For the needs of this city, this is a very small lot and won't satisfy any citywide need for open space, whereas matching adjacent residential zoning would be more appropriate. And there's no new neighborhood need for this particular property to be designated as open space, especially while it remains in private ownership. For the other required findings under the land use article 10-304, there's not been any significant population changes in the area. For public facilities, the neighborhood is well-served by public utilities, but that won't be impacted either way by the proposed rezoning. The residential zoning that is requested for this property won't have any significant impact on transportation patterns in the immediate neighborhood, since it's in residential area for the most part. For compatibility with existing and proposed development, the R7 district proposed for this property matches the others in the 600 block of East 33rd Street and won't affect or impair development potential in that area. The BMZA will, of course, comment separately. In relation to the city's plan, the block is not located in any particular renewal plan or any historic district or any other specialized plan area. So in the end of our staff report, we go through the breadcrumb trail, where I've kind of followed step by step through the comprehensive rezoning process from the start of the comprehensive rezoning bill 12-0152. If it would be simpler and attached to all of that, there are some exhibits. If it's easier for the committee, I'm happy to share a screen if that would make it easier or I can do it verbally, however you prefer, Madam Chair.
I'd like to.
All right, very good. Oh, it looks like I'm already presenter. One moment. All right, let me know when you can see it.
Yes.
Okay. So we start with the zoning map that existed prior to 2017, when the new zoning code took effect. So this is what it looked like. The property towards the middle there, highlighted in yellow, is the subject parcel. It was zoned R7 residential at that time. So the current map, and there's the property with a red arrow on it, is now open space zone. So how did we get from there to here? So looking at the very first set of maps that were introduced with bill 12-0152, which started the comprehensive rezoning process nearly 10 years ago, this was the map, and the big blue arrow points to that small mustard-yellow parcel, and all of those properties in that block were proposed for R7 zoning at that time. So in September of 2015, there was a first round of map amendments, and the Venable side of that block face was proposed for a alternate zoning district. They were looking at R1C as opposed to R7 to make it very low in density, and so it was put on a list as a potential map change. Along with those physical maps, there were those tables, if you remember those, with all the map and text changes kind of coded. So this was listed as map edit M678, and where the arrows are pointing, it shows that it's identifying the property to be changed as block 4053, lot 95. The concern here is if you look at the notes field on the right, it lists the verbal descriptions. This is unimproved as green space extending from 600 block of East 33rd Street to 600 block of Venable. So because it's a couple of parcels there with actually a piece of alley in between them that are unimproved, it kind of visually presents as one parcel, but in reality, it's two. And I think that notes description is what led to the administrative error. So as we move on, by the time it gets to the second reader map amendments, the map amendment number went to 626, which you see towards the center of the map there, and the map amendment 678 actually got repurposed for something else entirely unrelated. I mean, there was a lot of moving pieces in each district as they were looking at different parcels, working with various constituents. So, you know, it's not hard to understand how that could happen, but the subject parcel of this bill was not included in that proposal. It just happened to be adjacent. So by the time the second reader map amendments table was produced, and then I'll go to the next page where it zooms in on that piece a little bit more, the left red arrow shows what it showed before, where it talks about lot 95, but then somebody saw probably the notes field describing it as the green space extending from 600 block of East 33rd to 600 block of Venable, and thought, oh, wait, we need to catch lot 13 into it because that matches the notes field description. They probably wanted that parcel, too. And so they changed the block and lot number in the table here, even though it was not outlined in the accompanying map. You know, somebody was trying to be thorough and go through it, but unfortunately, they made the change the wrong way. They should have fixed the note fields instead. And so by the time the third reader map set came around, you get what we see here, where both lot 95, lot 13, and a little sliver of alley between them were all shown as open space zone, and that's what ended up getting adopted in the final plan. So that's how we got from here to there, and that, we believe, is just purely an administrative mistake that led to this property being zoned open space, whereas it should have stayed R7 from the beginning. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. I think this was a good educational piece for the committee. Are there any questions, any further questions to, from the plant, for the planning department? Moving on, we'll go with the, thank you, Eric, we'll go with the Board of Municipal Zoning Administration, BMZA. Nina, I guess you'll have to respond for them.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Representative was unavailable to participate from the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals. They stand by the report, deferring to the recommendation report of the planning commission.
Thank you. Department of Transportation, Liam Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Liam Davis, Baltimore City DOT. We stand by our bill report, which is no objections. Thank you.
Thank you. City Solicitor's Office? Victor?
Good afternoon again, Madam Chair. This is Vic Turbola for the City Law Department, Chief Solicitor. The law department is going to stand behind its report. We are prepared to approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency. You just heard ample facts that would support this as a mistake in zoning. If we, if there is any questions about the law relating to this, I have my colleague, Adam Levine, who has spent a lot of time dealing with the details of this, so he would answer questions if there are any to the law department on this issue.
Thank you. Any questions for the law department from the committee? Hearing none. Thank you, Victor. The Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for DHCD. We stand by our bill report. We do not object to the passage of this bill.
Thank you, Stephanie. BDC, the Baltimore Development Corporation, up, back up. Is that Councilman Stokes? Did I hear someone on the committee with a question?
Madam Chair, that was not me.
Okay, thank you. All right, the BDC.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Christina Moore with BDC. We stand by our report in support of this bill.
Thank you, Christina. All right, the committee will now take public testimony, and we are checking.
Madam Chair, I just, I forgot to point out that the Waverly Improvement Association did submit testimony in support of the bill. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Public testimony, and we'll start with Justin Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No comment. We're just here to observe and represent the property owner and who supports this application.
Thank you, Justin. Checking. Please use the raise hand function, going once, going twice. Okay, and we now have one call. Does that caller wish to speak?
No, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So there's one other person, Mr. Hassan Ghazi?
Yes, and attended.
Do you have words, or would you like to say something about this bill?
This is my first time observing, so I'm just, I'm just listening and observing for now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I think that covers all the attendees, and we'll now move for, we have no amendments, but we do have to vote on the finding of the facts. Do I have a motion to move the finding of facts?
So moved, Conway?
So moved by Conway, second.
Glover.
Second by Glover. Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
And Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Okay, that was for the finding of the facts. And is there a motion to move the bill?
So moved, Conway?
So moved by Conway, second.
Glover.
Second by Glover. Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes. And Councilman Conway?
Yes.
This bill will now be moved to second reader. I want to thank you all for attending, and the hearing is adjourned, and you all have a wonderful, safe day.